Did you punt on minutes last meeting? No, you didn't. You're good. Yeah, yeah.
You're good. You just need to do June 17th.
Do what?
June 17th.
Yeah, last meeting, yes.
Yep.
Excellent, you know what I mean? And we are on, you ready? Alright, I'm gonna call this, uh, this meeting of the Nottingham Select Board to order for July 15th, 2019. And before we begin, I'd like you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Flags in the rear of the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Donna, I'm gonna make it. You heard? Alright. Alright, before we get started, I'd just like to go around the table, let everybody introduce themselves, just in case, is anybody visiting for the first time?
John Morin.
Tyler Eaton.
Ben Bartlett. Tony Dumas.
Chris Sterndale, Town Administrator.
And Donna Danis has not joined us yet. She may be running late from work. Alright, first item on our agenda tonight is to approve the manifests. I will take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of July 1st and July 15th, payroll manifest of July 2nd and July 16th.
Second.
Now the motion and a second. Any questions on that? All in favor? What's that? Sorry. Alright. The next item we have is to approve the minutes from the June 17th Select Board meeting. Take a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June 17th, 2019, as written.
A second of that. I've actually got some edits.
Okay.
And I think, Ben, you had one or two?
I have, uh...
Did you have any edits for it, Donna?
Nope.
No? Alright, well, the one, the one thing that I caught was on the second page, our visitor from Stratford Regional Planning Commission, Jennifer Siz. Siz, that's how you pronounce it. That's how she wrote it on her business card. Um, her name is misspelled throughout that whole block of the minutes. So, um, obviously, we want to correct her, the spelling of her name. And that's on line 39 and 40, and 48 and 49. Looks like it's already been corrected. The assistant part, I don't see it. It's already corrected, so. And that's all I found.
One I had, looks like it's already been corrected, so.
Alright, so I will... No, it's S-E-R.
So, uh, correction on the line 31, Sergeant.
Let's go spell it correctly. Any other corrections? And I'll take a motion for the minutes as amended.
Make a motion to approve the minute as amended.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstention? Okay, act, next item on the agenda, action items from our last meeting. The only thing that I saw in the minutes was tax lien policy. Did you have a chance to get the, you were gonna send us the RSAs? And...
I can do that rather quickly.
We'll need to review those before we look at any potential policies, so. Is everybody in favor of pushing that off to our next meeting, so we have time to review the RSAs? That will continue to be an action item. It's just the empty envelope. That's blank.
Why is it in here?
She's out, Bill, tonight, so she would've been here to fill it out. Oh, yeah, she's... She's not here, so she...
Oh, that's, okay, okay.
Minute take.
Yep, 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 I got it.
Good?
Yep.
Alright, uh, next item on the agenda, reports from assigned boards and committees. Budget?
Uh, no meeting.
No meeting, yep?
No.
Planning Board?
Didn't make it. I was working.
No? Did they send you any, uh...
I haven't got any.
No minutes or, okay.
I can do Planning Board. I was there.
Oh, you were there?
Yep.
Okay.
Short agenda. Um, we introduced Stratford Regional and, uh, new contract planner to the Planning Board. Didn't really get anything too substantive, but, um, just brought them in, had a quick discussion, and, uh, the contract planner with, uh, Stratford Regional started last week, so, uh, we're up and running.
So was that Ms. Siz that...
She's the Director of Stratford Regional. She'll be involved, um, but, um, Steph Casella's gonna be the primary boots on the ground here. She's the one that did our road surface management study, actually, some of our traffic counts. So she's familiar with town. Uh, she's a little on the green side, so she's gonna have some backup, to get started anyway. But they'll be here, uh, Thursday mornings routinely, till we figure out what we need for time and, uh, what's, what's working. They'll be attending all the Planning Board meetings. And other boards and commissions as, as needed. Probably end up seeing her here for something or other along the way, but, uh, up and running. Started last week. A lot to do. Steph Casella.
Okay. That's it for Planning Board?
They had one short other, they had a driveway question they were dealing with, too. They approved a splitting of a shared driveway. That's the only thing I can remember from the agenda.
Alright, um, zoning? CIP? No meetings since last, last time? Okay. Marston?
Yeah, so Marston's, um, got some traction going. We will be, um, breaking ground sometime in August, which is fantastic. The question was posed as to whether or not we wanted to have a groundbreaking ceremony when that happens, which, you know, I personally think is a great idea. I'd be interested in hearing what you guys think of that as well.
What would that entail?
I don't know. It, it won't be anything like grandiose, but just at least, I think it's a...
Ribbon coven or something?
Yeah, something like that.
Big pair of scissors.
Yeah, or a big shovel, you know?
Golden shovel?
Yeah, spray painted, shovel is spray painted gold. Um, but I think it's, you know, it's a milestone. It's a, it's a great thing to celebrate the start of that.
Yeah.
Um, and a great way to, you know, kinda give a little more visibility to the project, so I'll work with, um, Matt Kacouchas on that. The other momentum is that we've got a really good, um, fundraising team together. And, um, Courtney, uh, is going after some, um, different grants for us from the state, and uh, she's got great connections with some of the other groups in town that we're trying to collaborate with. Joe Porter's working on, um, grants as well. Uh, Lauren Charette has stepped up to help with some of the grassroots funding. Um, so we're looking, actually, one of the biggest things we're looking at right now is putting together a sponsor package, right? So here are some of the things, um, some of the items that we want to be able to have out there that aren't covered under the current construction budget, right? And we're looking for sponsors for those. So we're gonna put that package together and then send that out to, um, local businesses or other businesses in the area that we believe may be interested in sponsoring, um, or individuals who are interested in sponsoring. Carl Eden has, um, stepped up to organize a golf tournament and has actually, uh, picked a date in October sometime, so there'll be a, um, a golf tournament at that point. So where, because we've now got momentum with the construction, we can now start to build momentum with the fundraising. And it's happening at two levels. It's happening at that grant level and then at that grassroots level as well. So I'm pretty excited about it. Of course, Tyler is, um, helping as well, getting us some free services and stuff. Or at least pursuing them, so.
October 6th.
Yeah, October 6th is the golf tournament. I don't know, did you hear where? I didn't hear where he picked, but, uh...
Not at Marston.
Not at Marston. Oh, Steve, cut it out. So I, I mean, I don't know if you have anything to add to all of that.
No, we're, we're awaiting word on, uh, the big state grant. We have to wait and see if we're gonna be invited to apply. We did a, a visit out there with the state parks people and got the indication that we would make that first cut. Uh, and, uh, that, that grant process will roll this fall. It's a big one.
Yep.
Big, big project, big money.
Yep. So, things are moving in the right direction.
Okay. The ribbon cutting, if it happens, when do you think it would be?
You know, I, I haven't, we haven't talked about it. We just kinda talked about it as, you know, is it something that we wanna pursue? And, um, I just, you know, we, I said I would come back and see if you guys were, you know, interested or opposed to doing that.
I'd be interested in it. And I think for those organizations that we've tried to partner up with before, that said they wanted to see more community investment, I mean, what, you know, what, what better way to demonstrate community investment than, hey, the whole Select Board was there for the opening day?
Exactly.
So...
And we might get some press coverage.
It's possible.
I wonder if I cover, what can I do? If I cover the golf tournament, can I pile a hole?
Moving on.
Okay, is that, is that, uh...
That's it. That covers the highlights.
Anything on 300th? Any news there? No.
The 300th will be, would be concert series, the 300th will be also, uh, having the hot dogs, stuff like that.
Yep.
And that begins Tuesday, the concert series.
Okay, thank you. Tomorrow?
Starts this week.
When, next week?
No, tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, that's it for Boards and Committees. Uh, how about the Town Administrator Report?
Uh, not a lot for you. It's a quiet time of year. Um, impact fees is the only thing of substance. Every year at this time, we have historically taken the impact fees, uh, the Fire Department portion of impact fees that we've collected and made an additional principal payment on the, um, fire station construction loan. The, uh, you, you are the keepers of impact fees. We don't have any other authorized use for them. It's a great way to use that money as, pretty much as soon as we get it, uh, and save on interest costs in the long run, so. Um, this year, we've collected about 11,000 in, um, the Fire Department portion of the impact fees. You know, there's a school portion, a fire portion, and now a rec portion. That amount went up a little bit last year, so, uh, I'm gonna send a thing down that you can sign if you're okay with it, uh, to authorize us to go ahead and spend that, uh, same way we have for probably 10 years now.
So the Fire Department portion is the 11,000?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, the, the Fire Department portion is like 800 per, um, impact fee. Schools like 4, 4,400, something like that.
Yeah.
Um, and the rec is, is brand new, so we don't have much to show for that. Uh, I suspect we'll come back and ask you to use that from Marston at some point, where it's a capacity expansion thing, but, um, it's small money at this point. And, and a couple of, uh, rate changes for Police Department that we've talked about in both cases. The only other thing is the summer concert series starts tomorrow night. And I don't remember Courtney or here, Courtney. Courtney, who is it tomorrow night? What is it? What kind of music?
Uh, folk music.
Good time will be had by all out here at the bandstand. Courtney's arranged good weather.
Good job, Courtney.
And hot dogs.
And, uh, the 300th Committee will be there. I think they're doing hot dogs and hamburgers again, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. So if you missed dinner, if you wanna come for dinner, this is the place. And, uh, thanks to Ben and, uh, his crew for finishing off our mountain of wood chips.
Well, it was like group effort.
It was group effort, but you, you put it over the top at the end there, yes.
That's awesome.
And that's that extra sheet.
Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry, I keep sending that.
That's okay.
So did you say, um, on the Fire Department, the Fire Station loan, that those impact fees amount to like an extra payment on it?
Uh, it's different every year, depending on how many we collect. Uh, we just make it as an extra principal payment, uh, so it, um, and keep our budgeted payments the same, so we'll, we'll end up enjoying the benefit of it at the tail end of that, of that loan in another six or seven years. It'll add up to, you know, if, if we're at eight to 10 grand a year, it'll, it'll end up chopping a year off at the end. You know, when the time comes.
Okay. So is that all you had for?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, well, we're just waiting on signatures here, but I will move on all the same. Next item on our agenda is general business, and first up, we have Courtney that is gonna discuss the after, after-school program.
While she's working her way up, you have, uh...
The budget?
Yes. Uh, Courtney was here four, six weeks ago. School Board selected the Rec Department to offer the after-school program, and we said we'd come back when we had the numbers figured out. Um, and what this is intended to show you is, where's the money gonna come from? How's it gonna pay for itself? This is intended to be a self-sufficient, um, operation. You know, we don't, we're not subsidizing it with tax dollars. It's just the people that are benefiting from the service, so. Uh, what Courtney needs is the green light to go ahead and do that, and, um, it involves taking one part-time position and making it a full-time position, which is all shown here in the, the costs of it. And, uh, how we spread the costs out across the various recs funds. That's what you're looking at. She's swamped, but otherwise ready.
At the least, yep. Really looking for, um, the green light to put out job postings. Uh, a lot of families in town have been poking and emailing and asking, and really with, with the events of the last couple of weeks and me being out for a little bit, it's really time that we get that info out, so the sooner the better.
Do you need a copy to look over? Sorry.
She wrote it.
I wrote it, so I can...
You've got it? Can you read it to memory?
Yep, I can answer questions.
Can you just walk us through the, the structure of this front sheet?
Yeah, actually, let me look at it.
Sorry, now you need one, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I just, it's kinda not.
Um, so this part is, is what Chris and I worked on together. Um, we have the rec revolving fund and then the general fund.
Yeah.
Um, that we have to split things between.
Yeah.
And this breakdown shows kinda where those hours are going to be, I believe.
So if we look at, like, the compensation lines and we look at general fund, you know, in the case of the rec director, it's saying 100% of that compensation comes from the general fund?
Yep.
Okay. And 50% for the assistant comes from that, and then where does the other 50% come from?
Their other 50% would come from the general fund.
50 plus 25 plus, or 27 plus 23.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, okay. Yep.
So 50 in the general fund line, and then allocated between summer camp and then after-school camp. And those are the two biggest programs that we run, and that would be, um, what the assistant would be mostly in control of.
Okay.
Kind of guiding and managing staff and kind of the point person for those two beasts of programs.
Okay.
We, we go into this knowing a couple of things. Um, we don't know what it's gonna take for that position in particular, so how much of that allocation is accurate? We're, we're kinda guessing right now, and I think you'll probably see us come back with some revisions to that as we learn. As they get off the ground, it'll take more time. That's something we tweak all the time. And try to make sure that the summer camp and now after-school are really self-sufficient.
Yep.
Uh, that's a, it's a little squishy, but, um, and the other, the other number of note is the, the net number on the second page. Um, that's, uh, after, you know, the revenues and expenses. That's really our margin for error.
Yeah.
Not having been in this business before, we, we don't know what might be out there, but we, we can enter it, I think, knowing that we've got some room to, you know, if it takes more staff than we thought it would, or, um, any other variables you worry about. How much we have to pay people to do it is another variable that you're watching.
On the positive side, we don't have child licensing caps. We don't have to go, we, we don't have to abide by those rules as we're the municipality. So our cap for children is fire code. And so the plan of attack is to basically put it out there, see how many staff we can hire, cap it at 50 for now, and see how we can grow. I know the need is there. As far as, as far as care, um, what I don't know is if we can staff it in the next three weeks as high as I'd like to. So we'll staff it with, if we, if we can get five staff members, we can allow 50 kids off of our general rule of thumb, which is one staff for 10 children.
Okay.
Um, and I always like to have a couple more just for cushion in case we need to.
And are you doing, um, morning or just after?
I am in talks with somebody about before care, as that is a need that parents have discussed, and if we can get that role to be year-round, summer camp and before and after care, that's a year-round option for these families that open before 7:30, which is when we typically open. We're hoping that that 6:45, 6:30 range is, is something that we can do.
Okay, so you're, are you hoping to do that for the fall, or are you just kind of like starting with the aftercare?
If I can get one person, that's 10 kids that we can have. Um, so it kinda depends on how many staff members we can secure before I,
Yep.
I open it to a larger number of kids. We'll just kinda work our way up as we get the interest, and as long as they're qualified, they're ready to go, or we're ready to rock.
You feel confident you might get the personnel you need?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, I, between the colleges around and getting someone who is qualified, that, this is a job that I think can be staffed in a relatively short period of time.
And so then, then, I mean, this is needy, but the numbers that you have for snacks, supplies, and arts and crafts?
Yep.
Do you feel good about those numbers? Cause they look like they might be low to me.
Um, I do. We have a lot of extra supplies that we've kinda gathered, that we've sorted out and,
Yep.
kinda run with for summer camp. We, my budget for summer camp is really low with activities. We reuse and re, we get donations from a lot of people in town, which is awesome.
Yep.
Um, so I do feel as though that that could be a pretty accurate number for this year. I'd like to, to bump it up to provide better activities once we kinda weed through what we have, but...
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. And the paid-to-school, what is that?
Um, that is the rental fee that we have. Uh, we have a fee that the school will charge us for maintenance costs and stuff like that.
Using the facilities?
Facility, yep.
Will it be the cafeteria, like the old program?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yep, cafeteria. We'll have gym use when we can. Of course, we'll have to work around, um, other programs and stuff, but we, we work with wider horizons currently, which is through the school, so that ties very, they're, they're easy people to work with, so very easy to help. And, you know, kind of move kids around to where they need to go.
Any other questions for Courtney?
Do you need a motion or just an okay?
Just an okay is good enough. As long as you're all comfortable with where we're headed.
I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, I am, too.
I've received a lot of, uh, feedback from, uh, parents in the town, that they're excited that, uh, you are taking on this, uh, challenge at the school. Uh, so I am really looking forward to see how, um, you can make this rec department grow. Uh, I'm very much in support of this.
Thank you. It runs after school.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's till, what, like 6 o'clock or something?
6 o'clock, yep.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
No questions? Alright, so basically, you just need an okay to post for those positions?
Yep.
So we're, seem to be in agreement that that we got a green light here, so.
Go for it.
Awesome.
Let the dogs loose.
Good luck. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Nice, nice job putting it together.
Thank you. Alright, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Alrighty. Alright, next item on the agenda is emergency lane evaluations. So what we're gonna do tonight, the Board is going to review the results of these evaluations. We're not gonna make any final decisions tonight. We'll, uh, we'll review the results of the evaluations. Chris, you can talk about the methodology and, and highlight anything that you think the Board should know at this point. And, uh, and we will go from there.
Okay. So you last talked about this early April, I think. At that point, I said that I thought you had three questions that, that you should think about addressing. One is, do you wanna tackle the public benefit question around emergency lanes? Two was, um, do you wanna set or enforce some sort of maintenance standard, uh, around what a private road, what condition it should be in if it's going to be an emergency lane? a private road, what condition it should be in if it's going to be an emergency lane? And three, what level of service do you want us to provide as the town? What do you want us to do? And to, question number two, around a maintenance standard, staff proposed some revisions to the existing policy around what should the conditions be in order to be safe for our people and our equipment to operate on? And in that discussion, you asked us to, before you did anything around changing the condition requirements, what would the impact of a change be, and where do we sit right now relative to those conditions? So you tasked us with going out and evaluating where are we relative to those proposed conditions or the conditions that exist in policy now? So that's what we did. Sean McLean, the Public Works Director, and I traveled all of them, most of them on foot. We cheated and drove a few that we could get away with. This is not a survey. There's no stamp on here. This is not exact in that regard. It is, it's an evaluation based on standing there on the ground, right in it, but it's not, you know, we don't know where the property boundaries are. We don't, a lot of things we don't know. So we measured the width of the traveled way. There's not really any rights of way that are visible to us in many cases, so we just used the traveled way. Looked for trouble spots in the roadbed. The two biggest things that we were highlighting were boulders or ledge that are protruding from the road surface. Those do damage to plows. And washout spots or places that we know are poorly drained, poorly designed, always wet, always trouble spots. Our guys know where those spots are. So we highlighted those two things in the roadbed, the height of the canopy, and the grade of the road. And we went through, did that with every inch of emergency lane, and that is what's before you. The, I don't think you want me to talk through every road, do you? I don't know, I'll do whatever you want. Were you able to get into Cedar Waters? We were. Okay. We were escorted, got a very nice car ride around the property. My first time there in daylight. Before Memorial Day.
Teenage years don't count.
Question.
All right. Talk to the chairman. I can't talk to you. You've got to talk to the chairman.
What was the second thing, the boulders and the other thing?
The what?
The second thing you were looking for.
Ledge? Is ledge the word you're looking for?
What?
Ledge?
Boulders is the first.
Ledge? Is that the second word you're looking for?
Okay, thank you.
And I'm going to add at this point that when we're done discussing this, I will have a block of time for folks to comment or, you know, share their, you know, any new information that, with the board that could help us in our decision-making process. So just, I just asked that you, yeah, silence your phones for one, and, you know, let us get through our discussion, and then I'll open up the floor. Okay? So is there, are there any commonalities that you found throughout the process? Like what were the most common things you found?
Well, we were looking for a pretty small list of things. The most common thing is stuff sticking out of the road. That appears on probably the majority of those roads. Understandable, but it's, and it's worse in some places than others. Some are bigger than others. That is the most common obstacle. It's not probably the most serious. Width is a bigger concern for the safety of the operators, and a couple of spots where the grades are pretty hairy for our folks. We didn't measure grades. We didn't want to have a tool that we could do that with effectively, so we just, that's an eyeball test. You know, a truck operator knows what's steep and what isn't, but we can refine that if you want something more scientific, but we're not surveyors, so.
Yeah. And just to refresh our memories exactly, I believe it was nine miles-ish miles of emergency lane, but how many roads is that?
There's a, well, named roads is about 20, between 20 and 25. There's a lot of unnamed or stubs of roads, like bar dairies. There's like four different bar dairy lanes. It splinters all over the place out there, and they're all called bar dairy. That's common out there, so the names can be a little tricky. But, yeah, it's about 10, about 10 miles totally. Yeah. Yeah, and you got to, and the folks who want to see this on the web, it's there too. We mapped all that stuff. What's shown on the map is those trouble spots, the width. The only thing that's highlighted on the map is widths under 14 feet. We suggested in our policy language 16-foot width, but it's a little subjective, it's a little squishy, so we just put 14 feet on the map.
Chris, can you explain the color coding to us on the summary page?
That is a, it's kind of a rough, these are the, these are the spots with the worst conditions in these categories. It's not quantitative. It is a, it's my attempt at summarizing it.
So what's the difference between like the yellow and the gold?
Yellow is less severe than orange or gold. I don't know what it looks like to you, but it's intended to be orange.
Okay.
Yellow being a concern or something was noted, but not as severe. So if it's blank, it means we didn't see anything that met that test of, you know, there was nothing that concerned us. Yellow is it was noted. Orange is probably more frequent or more severe, and red is the most, severe may be a strong word, but it's the worst of those conditions.
If blank meant nothing of concern, then what did green?
The, so there's one public benefit.
Oh, yeah, okay. I got it, I got it.
We didn't, you didn't task us with this, but in the field, we, usually with the help of somebody that was, that lived out there was walking with us, or things we could obviously see, was things that you might construe to be a public benefit to access it. That's one of the key points in the law, is that there needs to be some benefit to the public in order to justify a road being designated as an emergency lane. So that is not our assessment that, yes, there is a public benefit. It's just flagging it to say there was something identified that you might want to look at in that regard.
So it looks like the big obvious things, like a dam, a substation?
Right. Yep. It's, those are all dams or power lines or power line, like where, there's a couple of places where the, or I think one's place where the power line goes into the water on the lake and serves another neighborhood somewhere else. That's noted here. It's in the text as well. And another conceivable public benefit is an emergency lane that provides a second point of access or a second means of access to a Class V road. So you see that on Robin Hood. You can get to Robin Hood from Nottingham Lane's a Class V road. Robin Hood, most of Robin Hood's a Class V road. It's the only way in there in the Class V roads, but two emergency lanes also get you to Robin Hood. You could construe that as a public benefit in having a second way to get in there. If you're, if you have a road blockage on the Class V road, you could use an emergency lane to get to that, to parts of that neighborhood anyway. So those are the things that are just in green on that final chart there. That's not us saying there is a public benefit. It's just us saying, hey, there's something here you might want to consider.
Yeah. And I think, you know, just based on that description, I think we could get into a debate on individual roads with regards to public benefit. I don't know that we want to go there tonight, but there are just a couple of things to me that would jump out as debatable, so.
You mean things that, like how we define about the public benefit?
No, if you look at the examples, and I know you're just kind of throwing stuff out there, but if you look at the examples for, you know, access to a dam, right? I think there's roads on here that have access to a dam. They're not highlighted. Or I know the particular area that you're talking about in terms of the power cable going onto the lake and the two endpoints, and I don't think that's accurately reflected here.
The one coming out may not be there. I don't know if we know where that is.
We do, we do.
You know, somebody does, but I don't think we knew that in the, you know, we didn't pick that up in the field.
Yeah, so that, that's my point, is like we could, we could have that discussion about individual roads.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
So we, in other words, we can flesh this out further?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
What's your opinion on the overall evaluation of the roads, for me and Sean?
What is the overall opinion?
Yeah. Or does Sean want to speak about the overall opinion, what he thinks?
Ken, if you want to.
Hi, I'm Sean. What's your word, sir?
Hi, Sean. Okay, everybody be nice to him. He's only been here a short period of time, and we want to keep him.
Sorry, we shut the spot. Sit right here. Sure. I just did what you said. Just the overall opinion of the roads and their conditions. I mean, obviously not, we know what they are.
Yeah. There's a lot of, as Chris said, the ledge is a big problem. Turnaround spots are tight, and some don't have any, they're out there playing for a large truck that we're driving in there to get, to get turned around and get back out. They are backing into all of these emergency lanes in the winter time. They're not driving. It's all backing up in there because of the grades, the being dirt, that they're iced up so fast and having no traction to be able to control the vehicle when they're descending down some of these grades. So those are some of the things. It was the big obvious stuff, you know, not to be redundant, but back to the ledge, there's big crops of ledge sticking out of the middle of the road, large trees that are right in the way, very sharp turns with a 12% grade. So those are the things that concern me for the employees and the equipment that we have. You know, the town has invested a lot of money into equipment. The fleet is in good shape and just try to keep it that way.
What's a typical kind of damage that happens to, like a plow blade, if you hit a boulder or slap into a tree or something?
It can go from as little as just snapping the cutting edge to tearing apart the whole mow board, the spring apparatus, folding, deliberately folding the plow under the truck. My experience, I have seen.
We've also had accidents that could, were horrible on public roads.
Yes.
You can also notice, one of the things that it's jumped out at us is that the trees are notched in such a way, and it's not low because they don't have the wings down, the wings are up. The wings are hitting on a lot of the trees out there. There's big scars on it, which is, you know, good for the truck, but it's not good for the tree either.
With all due respect, I do just want to clarify one thing, because it's not a situation of backing down every emergency lane. There are, there are many where it doesn't involve backing up. Admittedly, there are, yeah, there are.
The tide comes tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not everyone. It's not all of them. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions for Sean?
Maybe, not now, though. Well, as things come up, things can change.
Anything, Tyler? Anything coming to mind? No?
Nope.
Nothing, no? All right. All right, well, we, what time is it? 7:15? Yeah, and these are new glasses, too. All right, let's, I'm going to say we'll take 15 minutes, and we'll let members of the public come up and...
Before we do that, can, what's your guidance as the chairperson for how we move forward with this?
What I'm thinking is, from here, we should schedule another workshop similar to what we did in December, and we will go through the notes and the assessments of each road individually, you know, work out the merits of each one. I don't think there's going to be a one-size-fits-all solution for every one. I think, based on what I've seen and in the notes as well as driving around, I think there's a few of these that would probably be suitable to, the homeowner's petitioning to be accepted, rather than just leaving them as emergency lanes. I think we're going to have a wide variety of solutions to this, and I think we're going to have to hammer that out for each one.
So in your mind, is it a matter of we're going to go through the list and say, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no?
At some point, we're going to have to.
Are we actually, in cases, you know, to Sean's point about, you know, trees being in the way and getting nicked and stuff like that, are we actually going to try and work with the people who live on these roads to maybe make it a safer condition for the town employees?
That may very well be part of the solution. If that's the only concern for a given road, then we put it to the homeowners to come up with a plan to address that.
I would like to hear, I would like to hear the opinions of some of the other board members as well.
Well, I don't think in any possible way should we stop maintaining what we're doing right now. I do find it necessary that we, you know, make these roads safe for the town employees driving the roads and take care of them, but the general maintenance of what we're doing now, I, in no way think should be stopped by any way, you know, from the grading that we're doing, even the winter plowing and sanding. If this perhaps stays as just being an emergency lane, I would like to see these become, you know, town roads, in a way that we can figure out to make them town roads so that we don't have to have these meetings. This is the third time this has come up over the years, that we can put this to rest, because the town has been maintaining these roads to a somewhat standard for 40 years.
If we, if we bulk accepted all these roads, right, you understand...
I understand.
...the millions of dollars required to get them all up to standard.
With that, whoa, whoa. Never made...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, people. I will give you a chance to speak. You've got to let us have our discussion here. Okay, so please, be respectful of all of our time.
You know, do we have to make them up to a standard of a brand-new?
Class V road?
Or a brand-new subdivision, right, you know, at 24 feet. I don't think that's going to be possible.
Well, and we don't even have that for the other dirt roads in town, so.
Right.
But considering that the town is liable for people that are injured on the accepted town roads for deficiencies that we could have corrected, so, you know, say we bulk accepted all these with the boulders, the roots, the, you know, and then somebody hits one of these trees going around a tight, narrow turn, do we want the town as a whole to accept that liability?
Well, yeah, I mean...
It's something to consider. It's just one piece of the puzzle.
There can be a discussion about, you know, X, Y, Z has to happen in order for it to be accepted as a town road, and that can be the town and the people who live on the roads working together.
And we did that, this past town meeting with, what road was it that was up?
Morris.
Morris. So that passed on the condition that it was brought up to standard.
But we didn't have, I mean, up to a new development standard?
No. It didn't say new development standard. It said to, a standard agreed upon by the board.
Right.
Which was the, was the standard.
Right. That was the placeholder for that standard we don't have.
Right.
But in its current condition, it was not suitable to be accepted as a town road, which is why we modified that warrant article to include that.
So should we talk about what a standard should be?
We can, but I'm not an expert in roads. It's, we leave that to our road experts to help develop the standard. to help develop the standard.
A reasonable, passable standard? As you said, the town being liable, if somebody's going down the road and they hit a tree on a sharp curve, you know, you can relate that on speed, you can relate that on a hundred other things, rather than just being a sharp.
Yeah, I mean, you can.
Well, and how is, if that happens on Ledge Farm Road, how is the town liable for that?
The town acquires liability in a road sense if you, if you are notified of a deficiency and you don't do something about it. Doing something about it can be actually correcting the problem, or putting a cone next to it and saying that you have a plan of how you're gonna rectify the problem, but that's where a liability comes from, is when there's a noted deficiency, and we've, now that we've noted a lot of deficiencies, we, we know a lot, we know about a lot of them already, so it would be hard to say, well, we didn't know there was a huge crop of ledge sticking out of that road, or that road was made out of ledge. It would be hard for us to say that, but...
So what's our liability going forward?
None. None, you have no, you have no liability for the condition of emergency lanes, their upkeep, their, anything about them. There's, you're protected in state law from that. There's no standard that you have to maintain as an emergency lane, there's nothing, the law is very clear about protecting you from liability of the condition of emergency lanes. This conversation was about class V roads and town roads, and where does our liability come from? Noting deficiencies now in an, in an emergency lane does not add liability for us, we've not, they're different animals.
I don't know if I'm putting the cart before the horse, but where we're using public funds for emergency lanes or private roads, do we open ourselves up to liability in that aspect of things?
Your, your attorney would tell you that you, you have some exposure to a potential lawsuit about it, you don't have a liability for the conditions on the road. The, the claim would be that you're using public money for private benefit and no public benefit. That's also theoretical, it hasn't happened.
That's where the legal qualifications come in. Certainly. No bugs, I hope. Actually, just kiss it out a little farther, the noise doesn't seem to like it.
How does that, does that AC impact your ability to hear us?
What?
Do you want the AC noise, or a little bit warmer? That's the door.
The doors are open, both doors are open, the window's open. That's, that's all we got for you.
Okay.
We can? Yeah, go for it. All right, we're gonna wedge open the front door in the hopes of creating a draft.
So, you know, I mean, I think what I'm, I'm with John, right? Like, this has come up multiple times, three was probably a low estimate. There's a lot of history behind how we got here, you know, multiple boards deliberated this, just like we are, there's a history that got us to this point, and I don't think that this board should keep kicking the can down the road. I think we should come up with, you know, a path forward, once and for all. And, I agree, let's do what we need to do to make them all town roads.
All of them? Yeah, that, I couldn't support that. Not for the financial expense, or the amount of liability?
This was never about finances, Tony.
No, but it would, it would subject the town to expense, to...
My question on that is that, and this is again, just as our discussion, is the taxpaying money that's coming from there goes to fund everything else in town also? The maintenance of all the other roads, their, their money from there is being transferred everywhere else. Why can't we use money to fix these roads?
Because the law doesn't allow you to spend tax dollars on private property.
That's the point, that's the point, that's the point.
That's not an alternate definition.
Wait, 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 time out. That's what John is saying, if they're public roads, then we're not spending money in a way that we shouldn't be, right?
Correct. Right, but to get them up to at least a comparable standard to our other town roads is a significant expense.
But we're only talking nine miles of road, correct to what we just said? I mean, we're spending, I mean, again, traffic count, I'm sure can play into things, but how much are we spending on, I mean, Ledge Farm, I'm just gonna use it as an example, it's a widely-used road, you know, highly on traffic on there, but how much is the town spending on that road? For three miles, four mi, I don't know how long it is, four or five miles?
For which road?
Just using the fact of using Ledge Farm Road. And we're spending a lot to maintain that, I mean, it's a high-traffic road, and I just understand the importance of doing it, but, you know, to make it safe for the residents. I just think it's something that we have to...
Right, but that's already an accepted town road.
Right.
Our obligations are there before any consideration of private roads. The law doesn't allow us to spend money on the private roads, unless it's an emergency lane.
I think we, we want to speak into the mics, so the folks in the back can hear us.
It doesn't help.
Well, we just have to talk louder.
I mean, the other thing, Tony, is that, you know, we don't, it doesn't have to be done carte blanche, right? We, we wouldn't say, you know, effective March 1st, everything, every one of these roads is a town road, and we're taking on whatever problems we have to take on, it could be some kind of a phased and prioritized approach, right? So...
So, I have one particular question. It seems as though we cannot identify ownerships of the, this road, some of these roads. That being said, the town can't really take ownership of it, or take land, if there's not a clear definitive, you know, documentation, who owns the road?
Who would we pay for taking that property?
There is a way, with the owner's consent, there is a way to make a road a town road.
I understand that, but on some of these roads, we don't know who the owner is.
You, you, you might, you might invest some money to find that out, I don't know how certain an answer you could get in every case.
So, who, who, if we're gonna go that route, are we gonna place it upon the folks, or are we gonna pay for it? We're all one community, that's how I look at it.
Yeah, but I think...
Well, okay, that being said, I understand everybody's frustration here, I don't want this to be a dividing factor for our town, okay? I've said, folks, let me, let me, let me speak, okay? I've said from day one, we are one community, okay? We are not gonna allow this to divide the town, all right? We all need to work together, and I've said from day one, we need to come to an agreement that's gonna be beneficial for both parties, those who live on the lake and those from the rest of the town. We have an obligation to both. That being said, we are one community, and we're gonna treat it as one community.
So, so Ben, I, I think, and, guys, come on. Between the, between the air conditioner and you guys, I can't hear, but, in my Pollyanna ideal vision, I would hope that we'd be all able to work together.
Absolutely.
Right?
And I truly hope that we can.
And that we could go road by road and say, okay, these are the trouble spots, what can we as residents and we as the town do to get it to the point where, you know, it can be accepted as a public road?
And I hope that is something that we can work towards civilly, and being civil to each other.
I agree.
You know, this is a hot topic, and that being said, I'm hoping that we can all remain level-headed, cool, calm, and collective, and come to a decision collectively.
I bet you don't live on the lake.
But I live near the lake.
All right, so, let's keep the pub, let's keep the conversation to us up here, please, for the... Sorry, I just lost my train of thought for a second.
It happens.
You know, again, like just Donna said, reiterating quickly, you know, the fact of, you know, we noticed the trouble spots here, we know some we can fix, some we can't. You can't blow up the ledge in front of somebody's house in the road, that's probably not gonna ever happen. And I don't think we should expend to that, you know, on certain areas, there's gonna be up to some things that we look aside to. I mean, it's all, you know, and again, in a, a way to try to maneuver this to make everybody happy without being too expensive to everybody, but yet still making it safer for people to do, you know, because again, there's roads in town, too, that we know that are narrow, you know, that need to be widened and fixed, but, you know, there have been already accepted town roads. If we use for an example... Hold on, sorry.
Um, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm sitting here struggling with is, how do we get there? How do we get there, right? Like, I, I don't foresee how this board is going to get to a decision. And, you know, in, in a case like this, like in the business world, we would bring in a consultant to help guide us through the process and, and get to a decision. And, I, I'm just not seeing how we get there.
Well, we've been going through this process of, you know, studying the road, evaluating the roads, you know, reading the RSA, RSAs to get, you know, to, to learn and understand those definitions, you know, we've been going through this process for a while.
I know, we've been going through a long time.
All right, so, that's why I think we need to have another workshop as a board to hammer it out, once and for all.
Well, can we come to a, 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 that same tight where we have, in order, again, in order to make them town roads, is there, in order to get that, are we gonna set a standard for these roads?
That's a separate question.
You know, is there anything that says, hey, we looked at all these roads, we did the evaluation, and 80% of these, again, this is hypothetical, not, don't take it to ours, but 80% had the minimum of 16 feet to work with. So, then it's just fixing that, those other sections to make the width? Right, but I'm saying if, if we needed the extra two feet, because that's gonna help out, as we, as you read from the other ones we had, we were trying to use the number, you know, 14 being the minimum, but, you know, if we can get to 16, that gives the plows a little extra room, that gives a little bit more turnaround, it's a benefit for everybody.
Shane? Sean, I'm sorry, can, can we do it at 16, or do you need 18? I thought you, it was 18.
We can do it with 16.
Providing that there's no...
Right, you don't have a tree right up against the shoulder there, the edge of the road.
Okay, but then that, if we, if, if we can do it at 16, that doesn't take care of the, the turnaround? That needs to be addressed.
We addressed that, there was a standard that we had set up for that, with the width of the truck, and what was that?
It was, it was essentially two, two, you didn't want to back up any further than two lengths of the truck, and you had, you had room to back the full length of the truck in somewhere, yeah.
And, some of these are not gonna meet that, because now you take, you know, you've got, some of them, you're back...
Which truck are we talking about, we're using?
Doesn't matter which truck, I mean, I've gone down some of these roads with my dump truck, it's not as big as the town's, and I've had a hard time turning around.
We have a tiny little Kubota that comes down ours, it doesn't have any problem.
The whole thing, I, I'm just sitting here listening, and I, like I said, number one, Tony, you're running this meeting, I'm listening to what you say, and everybody else, I think, on the board, we're talking amongst each other, you guys out here, for some reason, you think, I was one of the ones, and there's another board member here, that voted to do work in the town of Raymond with Nottingham taxpayer money. If you don't think that we don't care about you, I don't know where you're, where you're getting that. But that was something that we had hundreds of people from town demanding answers, why we did that. And we did it because you live in Nottingham, and you're our neighbors.
Technically, that...
I really want it to go away, because we're here representing you like we would anybody else in town. I live on, I live in a development, I pay a fee every month, and I had to pay a fee to get my road approved by the town meeting.
No, no, no.
You'll have, you'll have your opportunity.
Just wanna proceed and get this thing going, let them speak, so we can, we're gonna come up with a solution, there's no... I heard earlier sufficient means it's okay. I said they get them right on the, for the next town meeting, let's get them approved, make them town roads. If it's sufficient. If it's not, then that's where we, that's where we, we work together and say, what do we do to make this one sufficient? Go one by one, we have to.
And that's what I'm proposing doing at, at our work session, because I've always said, there's not gonna be a one-size-fits-all solution for this collection of roads. Some of them are suitable to be accepted, others have zero qualification whatsoever to be emergency lanes, legal or otherwise, under town policy, so we have to work this out. It's a difficult process, but that's what we're gonna have to do. That's how we're gonna come to a decision.
But even on those, just to state, even though they're the smaller ones, if the town's been dropping a plow on it for the past 30 years, we gotta give that due diligence, even though it might be the crappiest section, we have to at least acknowledge it.
Under the law, that creates zero obligation under the, to the town, you know? And there's, the other side of that coin, right, the legal requirements coin, is that the people that don't live on an emergency lane or a private road, you know, anyone who can put together the argument that we're misappropriating tax money can also bring a lawsuit against the town. So we are vulnerable. Excuse me, you will have your chance. Surely, people, surely.
I, I think, I think the argument against that, Tony, is that nobody's done that in 30, or 40, or 50 years.
Times have changed. They have changed. The town is being sued for the new water protection ordinance, it'll be just... No, but you wouldn't have seen that happen 10 years ago. 20 years ago.
I didn't go down to, I got you, that makes everything?
All right, well, the issue's to keeping things moving along.
Just one more thing.
Well, what I wanna ask is, can we agree to have this, have a workshop dedicated to this topic, like we did in December? And it'll, and it'll also give, you know, time and opportunity for a wider slice of the public to weigh in. In a form where we'll have more time to, more time to give them.
So I'm a little frustrated with these, the board gets this information, to your point about the one community, right? The board gets the information, we mull it over, we plan a workshop, these guys come, they sit here in the audience, all frustrated, they get mad at us, people on the board get frustrated with them, so I'm just concerned that another workshop is gonna be that way. So, my question is, is there a way, if, if we're gonna have a workshop, where we're gonna do some road-by-road analysis, how do we involve people who live in those roads or represent those areas in that discussion, without having this type of a, a meeting?
So, you're asking for a solution where everybody gets what they want and they're happy?
No.
And nobody complains?
No, 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 I'm just saying, to Ben's point about we're one community and we're gonna work together on this, us holding these workshops and them sitting there mad at us is not one community working together. Right? So, how are we gonna, how are we gonna get past this? It's us sitting here in judgment, right?
Yeah, correct.
But, no, it shouldn't be.
But you've also got to include the people that don't live on the private roads or emergency lanes. Excuse me, please, be respectful of our time, because I'm, I keep, I'm wanting to let you people speak, but you keep interrupting us. Please, please let us finish, please.
Ben, Ben, do you get where I'm coming from when I say?
Yeah, I totally understand where you're coming from, Donna, and, and honestly, if I can, you know, make a comment here, I think, before we have another workshop, I think we need to come up with some sort of standard going forward, so that when we do have a workshop, we can present this to you folk, to everyone, the town, and, and come together and decide, okay, is this how we're gonna go, and we're gonna move forward, 16 feet, 18, 14, whatever we come up with, and at that point, if we identify that this is gonna be our standard, then we can start the job... we can start the work of working together and fixing the problem. Whether, you know, as a community as a whole, we come together, or contractors, or homeowners themselves, you know, we could all discuss that in the workshop, but I truly believe we need to come up with some sort of standard prior to having a workshop.
So that's how we got here, right? Remember, because Chris came in with a draft standard, and we said, well...
We need to adopt one.
We need to look at what's out there first.
Right, now that we know what's out there, we can come up with some sort of...
And I'll take it a step further and say that, notwithstanding the whole emergency lane issue, we need to have a solid standard, period, for the town as a whole. We still need to accomplish that work. That will help us with this...
For non-new subdivisions.
For, yeah, yeah. Because that, I mean, that will help us with the emergency lane issue, but we need that standard across the board for a variety of situations. We need to complete that work.
So what you're saying, help me understand that comment for a second, Donna or Tony, is that we're expecting that these emergency lanes or private roads to be brought up to the same standard as a subdivision? That's not what you're saying? Okay, I just...
It's not what I'm saying, I don't know what you're saying.
No, I'm just saying, we need to establish these standards, you know, emergency lane...
Okay, I just, for everybody out there, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that, okay?
Two quick things. The word standard, what you started, what we started with here was intended not to be a standard for what it takes to be a town road. It is, what is the standard it takes to be an emergency lane? So I just wanna reinforce that that's, that was where we got to those, it needs to be this wide, this tall, this, you know, this flat, that's what we were shooting for. We were not trying to develop a standard for class five road. So I just wanna clarify that.
Thank you.
Because the, and that came from a place of, well, we plow them and we grade them once in a while. That, this is what, you know, we guessed at what you'd want us to do to emergency lanes, which is what we've always done, and we said, this is what we think you need to do to do that safely. So that, when you talk about a standard, that, what we suggested to you was entirely about emergency lanes, it was not about town ownership. A standard for a class five road, we have not considered that question, we don't have a standard for it, it would be considerably more comprehensive. We would suggest something a lot more rigorous.
So, okay.
So I just wanna clarify that, I have no idea what that would be.
Right, okay.
But that was my point that we...
You could be facing that question from Moore's Road, if Moore's Road says, we wanna move forward on this, you're gonna have to set that standard, we don't have it, so I just wanted to clarify that.
And that's what I was getting at, we need a comprehensive set of standards for all categories of roads, not just the emergency lanes.
Well, that's even bigger, but the second thing, while I have the floor, I wanted to point out to you that you're gonna continue to have an obstacle with, if you wanna involve the people on the roads, very few of them, if any, have any mechanism to do that. You have active people and people that pay attention and are concerned about it, and you have everybody else that lives there and is probably equally concerned about it, but there's no structure in place.
Unless they appoint a representative.
Well, they, who is they? Who is they? Who is a road, is there a road association? Is there an owner of a road?
Yes and no, right?
Exactly. You're gonna, if you wanna go down the road of more comprehensive town involvement, or the residents on the roads doing something to the roads, somebody's gonna need to know who's in charge of that road today. Somebody needs to know who owns that road, who's responsible for that road today. We don't know that, and I think one of the questions that we're gonna have to ask is, how can we help these residents come together in some way?
Sure.
To do that. Ideally, as in everywhere else in the state, there's road associations, and people that share the use of a road are somehow associated in some way, there's a legal framework or something, that, where they share ownership of the road, or they share some responsibility, or it's clear who owns it, we don't have any of that. So you're gonna struggle with some people on a road being willing to do something and others not. An owner not willing to do, be willing to do something when the people who depend on the road owner to deliver a road maybe want something different?
Yep.
Lot of landmines there, I don't have a soul of that for you, but...
No, that is a challenge, that is a challenge. The flip side of it, though, and the thing that I struggle with, Tony, is us as a board sitting here and going road-by-road and, you know, passing judgment on individual roads without any input from the people who live on those roads. Right? And I get your problem, your comment, I totally, totally get that, but we don't know what the people on Bardary Lane are willing to do, right?
Would you wanna poll every person on the road to see what their opinion is? I mean, how do we accomplish that?
None of them own Bardary Road.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, but how about where you got some of these roads, like, you've got like eight different owners, because in the front of their house or their property line, they own that section of the road.
Yeah, they can't do anything with it.
I'm not saying Bardary really.
I just picked that because it was the first one on the list, I didn't mean anything about it.
I mean, fundamentally, you're right, it is a question for the road owner, and unfortunately, the residents out there are caught in the middle, right? They may live on the road, but not, you know, not own a slice of it, they may have an easement to use a part of the road, and some, by error of paperwork, have no legal right to use the road whatsoever, and they just don't know it yet. Because it never happened during the real estate transaction when they bought their home, you know? That's, I mean, those are civil matters, and that's certainly not something the board should take on.
I know we brought up road associations before, I mean, we can't require these private-owned roads to have association? None? Okay.
It's the logical way to solve lots of things.
Yeah, yeah.
And you could certainly compel it.
I'm not advocating, I'm just, you know, asking questions for...
We have road associations in town now.
Right.
That take care of private roads.
You were living on one, alright.
Well, you're on a class five road, but we have, like, Mendham's Landing is a, it's not a class five road, it's a private road. It's a road association that maintains the road. We don't have any involvement with it whatsoever. That's how most private roads are managed in the state. We just don't have anything like that.
Alright, well, let's take the opportunity to hear from the folks in the crowd, it is hot in here, and...
Well, can we agree on working on some sort of resolution standard, some sort, prior to a workshop? Are we willing to agree on that?
Do we have enough data to form one?
I don't know, Ben, like, I get where you're going.
Well, see, and John brought this up earlier, and I'm sure everybody that's involved in this situation wants this to be done and put to bed, so we never have this discussion again. That's where I'm at right now. We have an obligation to ensure that we do this and do this right, so that we never have to deal with this again. That being said, we owe it to them.
I just, so how would we come up with that standard? And how would it be any different than what Chris brought to us two months ago? Using this information that we have here, how would we come up with that standard?
I think that is something that we'll need some further discussion to come up with a standard. Whether we use what's already been put out there, or we tweak it a little, but obviously, I'd want input from everyone out here.
Well, one thing too, is before we get even, I mean, that's a very important part, which we need to get to, but just to cover things, we should contact everybody that we know that owns said private road, and tell them, make sure, I don't know, I can't, a lot of people in the audience, but to make sure they're on board with what we're doing.
Do you notify all the owners of the roads like we have the groups?
It's legally not required, I mean, I'm just stating that as a fact of the RSA. It's not required to notify road owners, landowners, anything, that an emergency lane status is being removed. Though, yes, I totally agree, it would be nice to hear what folks have to say.
If we're not, we're going to, if we're going to try to make it accepted as a town road.
If what?
If we're going to try to make it accepted as a town road.
Well, there is a process to get a road accepted, it's very specific, it's all laid out in the law, and it has nothing to do with how we manage the emergency lanes. It's a completely separate process. And as I've said before, it may be the best solution for some of these roads that are in good shape and suitable to be accepted, that have minimal, you know, structural issues, right? But there are a lot of, there are some roads on this list that have zero legal qualification to be an emergency lane, so the condition of the road is moot. And that's part of what we need to dig through, that's why I think we need to have a workshop, to hammer through all of these, not just the physical conditions of the road, but the legal requirements as well. Because that has to come into play, the town has to comply with the law, and it's gonna matter on some of these roads.
How'd you come up with the ownership designation, just looking at the maps? Or how did you, how do you...
Yeah, most of it is tax map information. Yeah, we've not dug into deeds and see who's got an easement over who and that kind of stuff, we don't have that kind of muscle, so most of it is tax maps, a little bit of, you know, local knowledge, and, you know, we've had occasional communication with people that, you know, acknowledge or, you know, claim ownership of a road, you know, that people come before the planning board, sometimes that comes up. So we have, in some areas, we have a pretty clear indication of where ownership lies, and others we don't have that.
So since that's a sticky point, and it is a sticky point, is that something we can work with the residents of the roads, you know, to try and determine?
Determining ownership, that's a civil matter, it's not for, it's not for the board or the town.
I'm not saying the board, Tony, I'm going back to Ben's, we're all one community, and I'm saying, is that something that we can ask the folks on the roads to live, to help investigate on their own, to try to understand that?
Yeah, absolutely.
What about, I know college students to get some internship kind of thing, can't we dive into that a little bit? Maybe they can do some research and, you know, probably next to nothing, probably cost for them to dive into this and figure it out, or?
Could be.
I mean, I'm just coming up with some kind of ideas here, so that, you know, everyone out here knows that we are all committed to a resolution here.
I mean, we're a town that really doesn't follow rules very well, right? I mean, this has been going on for a hundred years. If we were a town that followed rules, someone would've said, Jesus, a lot of people in this room evacuate the place today. I mean that in a good way, I mean, we do it for the people, that's what we do, you know, a small community, and if we were down in Massachusetts somewhere, that some fire commissioner would've been, hey, get out of the room, I mean, there's many people.
Alright, so, where are we at?
I wanna open the floor for our, for our participants here, so I'm gonna ask you, please come up one at a time, identify yourself clearly into the microphone, we don't have a stenographer tonight, so she's gonna have to listen to the video to catch your name, okay? So identify yourself clearly into the mic.
No, yes, I'd love to, but no.
You need to move.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, yeah, have a seat over there. And please just, and please just stick to facts, and don't circle around saying the same things that other folks have said, right? Keep it, keep it rolling, out of respect for everyone else's time, okay? And feel free to sit, too. And then folks, please, please keep it down so that the person speaking can be heard by all. Thank you. Can you identify yourself?
Clayton, out on the lake.
What road?
Butthead, they call it Butthead, there's a little animal staying on it. I like, seemed like he had a fantastic idea to come up with a emergency lane road standard, something that was, and apparently did something two months ago?
Yes, we have, well, we have something now, and we propose some changes to it.
And with something like that, it, you know, gives you something to work against, you know, you can say, well, this road lacks something on grade, tries about, that if you get hit by the plow, just talk to the landowner, they'll hit him, cut down, that's not a big deal. But that's, that's the only thing I've got, you sound like you had a great idea.
Come back every week.
But I would like to, is it written up, the standards for emergency lanes? I think it would be nice, I'd like to see what that...
Okay, thank you.
Alright, for everybody at home, I understand that they can't hear us, we're having issues with our mics, so...
Bear with us.
Hello, may I ask, I'm from Bardary Lane.
Keep it down.
And I only got one small thing to say, is, and that's to his question, he asked about the family product. At the first meeting, it was stated that we're gonna tell them what they're gonna do, and that's why some of the adversaries back here, and you call this ignorant of the law. So that's why some people just don't trust you guys. Now, Ben stated that you're all on board, or not, I don't know. He stated he's on board, and Tyler stated he's on board, with getting this done once and for all, and putting all the roads on the map as being town roads, or whatever designation you wanna do, but town maintained roads. Now, in the first meeting, that was not what was said, and that's why everybody was there at that first meeting, a couple hundred people, because the whole place was really in up and arms, as statements made by the Board of Selectment. That's all I have to say. First of all, Tony, for what it's gonna cost, just gonna take the assessed valuations of the three lakes and compare it to the total valuation. What can I say, a little difference there. You have to pay the money, you have to put the money for it, just to say a note. I'm here to discuss public benefit. I looked at your analysis, well done, just needs a lot more detail. And thanks for doing that. Only way you talk about public benefit, you define that upfront. However, if you go into each individual street, you talk about public infrastructure. And when you have the analysis, there is only four out of 28 roads that identify public infrastructure. Is there a difference between infrastructure and public benefit?
I asked the question.
Let me tell you something, back in 2004, for a range, I was a select person, and the chief of the county chief, walked down the entire lake, because we never had a problem, and this is your problem today. The lake is public, it's not private. And what happens after, the owners who respond is have to respond. Rotterdam is first response, it's in Rotterdam. Think about it. You can, it runs from up to the landing, the bubble, and you're gonna come all the way down, all the way into the lake, you don't care what time it takes? So they're gonna just run around by boat, and people told me, we would have access, the access looked decent, alright? Then we went by car, and went to 10 neighbors, all the way down, and said, you have some great access, do you think you could have had access to after the entrance? Our town said yes, but hasn't anyone who said no. In fact, they encouraged us. So we have to go up the front, and bury the neighbors who have taken place all the way, even if it was white people, uh, white people, people, uh, at the park. And how many people are there at the park? Are there any people that like it?
Thousands.
Yeah?
Thousands.
Thousands, correct. Those would have made us pay more monthly. And then with four lakes, a major range, who would cross the line with us? Those would have passed 30 years, they'd be hard to handle, hard to handle, and you don't talk to lots of people, you don't talk to lots of people, but also to try to drive it now.
Private roads?
It's not such things that probably would be a problem for you. See, Rogers Leffler, who passed 500 miles for 20, 23, 20 years, said these probably weren't allowed in the future, they're not allowed to classify as private roads, they are a major shit range, and can't have a provision, and that's the legislative requirement. Look it up, you'll see. I can give you the details if you wish. So, my point is, there are 10 people on the lake, who have a public benefit, and allow them to cross over, that private road, and pour water in the water. Well, what should be considered? Well, what should be considered this day you did? I don't know if that's fair, I don't want that deep in the ground anymore. But nonetheless, I am absolutely sure, 20% of the people here right now, if they had accurate, adequate, interested, like, the primary state exacts anything, these people are saying, "They're going to choose, and we say, 'No, kind of is a luxury, and we choose, you know, picking access.'" They would be there, they would be successful. Think about it. That's public benefit. So stop talking about public benefit and try to shoot this to everything now because there's no public benefit. Take another look. I'll identify a few other things. There's no gates and bars on any of these roads. They're the clear lines that are public. They don't pass, so you'll go down there if you don't live on that lake. You don't go down Badger Lane, you don't wish. There aren't gates and bars there. You don't have to pay any money. Give it some thought, please. What about down access? You didn't identify down access, but you got over to, uh, which one is it? The Dover, what Dover? Good. We said stop. We stopped, but it isn't the same time. But there is it. That's accessible, that's public benefit. What about in 2000 polls? They're in every place. That's public benefit. And the second thing about first responders responding, nowadays, a police officer must go and must be the first to respond, right? Because of kind of things that are going on. There's one vehicle going down Badger Lane. Do you think that vehicle's going to get to them by any vehicles and flash? Or tell me now it won't? And if it does, you have to burn the vehicle. Many of the people have emergency, uh, uh, ambulance, medical. They're anxious to get me because they need a car. And what do they do? Great Canadian 156, beautiful, they can go to him. They get the Badger Lane and they get a Z and Z, like I do when he did, and then they don't have road dust. We're talking about emergency response, public benefit. And yes, the provisions in the law talk about five years where nothing's been done on the road. And therefore, you guys can just ignore it. All right? But in the five year now, or the five year one, if that's what you guys are doing, you're going to separate and you're going to destroy this town totally. Because these people aren't going to put up for it, nor am I. And what are they doing things that are going to be way different than what I'm doing? And you're going to end up splitting this town in half. This town, everybody in this town, the politicians before you, and me, have everybody in this town at heart. That's why you have the maintenance ranges. That's why you have some roads, hey, they're not hot out. And we're still going to maintain them, but we're not for them. Because they're not running. I sat there, tell us we didn't run it. They wanted to kick the wimps and bokes. We paid attention to those people. You guys aren't paying attention to anybody on any of the three, uh, waterways we have in our town, in my judgment. Now, one last thing. There's a lot of history here. You're still talking about the being. And when the legislature in Raleigh was looking at this and I studied this, there were three studies performed. They're better for goes, and what they're going to do here in Rotterdam, New Hampshire. And I recognize one thing, Rotterdam, New Hampshire's not a rich community back then. Still are. Rotterdam, New Hampshire needs some of such buying rates and increases. And we looked at those reports and we said just as a goal, and we achieved it. You folks got more money from the three lakes in this town than any other corporation of, of residences in this town. You know it, and I know it. And you're talking about not taking care of the town roads, the private roads, the rest of the ways? What are they talking about? They should be. Because we're paying the right taxes, and I'd rather do it, and I'm sure many of these people behind me are going to do it. But we can't do it now because these roads are protected. Fortunate. What are they doing this way? I haven't seen a driver on Badger Lane in three years. I haven't watched a grader on Badger Lane in three years. I must sit out there if it was a break. A big company, they should show them what a lot goes down into a cause where it comes over because, because that would have an effect on the water body of the lake. And I'm sure we've gone through with the other such roads and we've built it up so that the waters are having a lot to do with the lake. You did that because the state says you have to do it. That's why you did it. So all I got to say, thank you for listening to me.
We're just halfway back. There you go.
Okay. Pam Kelly, 35 Sacks Road. I want to start out by saying, I am not mad at the people here. And I think you guys have inherited a situation that somebody many years ago started and you didn't do it. I know you're doing your best. You're struggling to try to find something that's fair, that meets the standards of the law and so forth. I think, I can see that it's really difficult. And I, I know you didn't start this. It started 50 years ago, if not more. And you guys have inherited it. I appreciate that. I'm not angry. I'm a little frustrated, but oh, well. So is everybody. But I have two questions. They're rhetorical questions, and so they're probably more like comments. My first is, if the town has been able to plow and maintain and repair these roads that we're calling emergency lanes, that really are camp roads, for 50 years, more probably, but if you look at, if you look at a town report from 1969, you'll see, they were maintaining, plowing, maintaining, grading, the camp roads. So, if they've been doing it for 50 years, why all of a sudden are there problems that everybody here is talking about and identifying? We have problems we've got to fix, we can't do this, can't do that. I don't understand it. It's been happening for 50 years. Why all of a sudden are there problems? That's my first rhetorical question. My second rhetorical question is, if we're talking about emergency lanes, and I think that's what Bill was talking about, and I think Mr. Dimas was talking about, what can this board do that cannot be undone by a board in the future? Because these are emergency lanes, and you all know what the statute says, you've made it clear, we all know what the statute says, and it says, any board of selectmen can just decide to discontinue them. So, yes, I, I am happy that you're working on this and trying hard to come up with something, but coming up with standards for emergency lanes doesn't do us any good. Because when you're not here and a new board is here, they could just say, "We need to get out from under this obligation. We don't want to do this anymore. People in the town don't like it. It's illegal, the blah, blah, whatever." And so, I applaud you for tackling this, but I'm a realistic person, and I know when you're not here, the new board is here, they can erase everything you've done. So, thank you.
Kevin Bassett, Shore Drive, three minutes. Sean and I went out on Lamprey. We noted some trees that could be taken down, have started to mark them. And I'll take down as many as I possibly can. After you take a tree down, there's a stump. If you want to help, you could help pull some stumps. And that would be a start to help Lamprey, one of the worst roads you got, to get a little Just trying to help. It's up to you.
Thank you.
Todd Effe, 28, Tuckaway Shores Road. I wanted to talk a little bit about this ownership issue that you talk about and just offer what I see from my perspective as a practicing real estate agent.
Do you speak up, Tom?
Sure. Oh, that's right, you can't hear me. Okay. I'm, I, my name's Tom Duffey, I'm from 28.
Well done.
Thank you. So, the people that live on these roads have easements. They have easements across the land. It may or may not be owned by them, it may be owned by other people. But people that have easements are allowed to improve those easements, confer the rights on those easements to other people, like when we sell the house, we confer it to another person. So, and it, and so I think that the ownership issue and the whole idea of having to notify the owners of the road, if those who live on those roads have easements, and most of the deeds do show the easements, uh, there shouldn't really be, that shouldn't be a stopper, that shouldn't be a showstopper. The second thing is, is that I've found is that there are quite a few surveys everywhere. Many of the, of the neighborhoods have, have surveys and were in fact town subdivisions. So whether they were private roads or not, they're town subdivisions with rights of way through that subdivision. And those surveys exist and almost all of them are recorded. So if you do need to find out where there is an easement across somebody's property, it may be that the subdivision shows the road this way, but it actually goes this way because there was a tree or a boulder there. It's not that difficult to obtain an easement if you think you need one for that tree that's on my property. And I'll be the first one to give you an easement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Given, Eleven Mind a Waste. And I'm new to town, so I didn't know about this whole lake and not lake, but some of the other towns, you've got more affluent neighborhoods and less affluent, but again, it should just be run by a single government and it's one community. So I totally agree with that. I just want to make a comment that if a decision was to be made to take one of these existing EL roads and turn them into a private road, it's going to be very problematic for the homeowners and in turn for the town. One, for the homeowner, of course, negative impact on the property values. Two, more than likely going to void your homeowner's insurance. I know that firsthand because when I bought almost two years ago here, I went to, to get the loan and the, I used in-state homeowner's insurance, Liberty Mutual, so they knew what an EL road was, but I'm a private road off of that EL road. But because I was less than 500 feet away from the EL road, they insured me. My lender, out-of-state lender, had no idea what an EL road was and nay the closing, they just put up a fit and said, "What, what's, we're not going to lend you money for this home." And I had to send them the New Hampshire statute on EL roads and was able to convince them to lend me the money. But again, for any of these homeowners, if that EL road is turned into a private road, homeowner's insurance and could be void, and worst case scenario, you don't know it, so you go to make a claim, the house burns down and the homeowner's insurer says, "Oh, wait a minute, we insured with us, that was an EL road. That's now a private road, you didn't inform us." And sorry, we're not going to, we're not going to back up that claim because it took emergency responders too long to get to that facility. From a town perspective, uh, you know, there's some talk here about, you know, concern about lawsuits to the town. I can, can assure you, but I'm pretty, I bet my house on it that there will be lawsuits by the homeowners because of the detrimental impact to the property values and claims of town abandonment of a, of a longstanding precedent of maintaining those roads. And me, for one, would feel as a new homeowner here, like the rug was pulled out from underneath me, that I was sold a bill of goods and I, for one, will, would bring a lawsuit, just to protect myself. The other thing is, people may start paying their taxes or, or put the taxes in escrow and could cause a town cash flow problems. Because I, for one, again, I would probably do that if, if the rug was pulled out from under me. If the town did decide to change an EL road to a private road, would the town drop the assessed value to reflect the drop in market value? Or is that too early to discuss? But that'd be one thing that the market value of that home is going to drop, so therefore the assessed value should be, should be adjusted accordingly. Now, again, back to the lawsuits. So is the board afraid of lawsuits, keeping the EL roads as they are now, this designation?
It could come from either direction. The people that want to maintain their emergency lanes or the people concerned about us spending tax money on private property. So we're sort of in a, between a rock and a hard place.
My understanding and in may not be correct, but that was the reason why in New Hampshire that EL road designation was to limit town's liability where...
It was to give the town permission to act, the ability to act on private property should a need arise. It wasn't intended to obligate the town to permanently perform, you know, maintenance on a private road, for example.
Not permanently perform it, but chances of you getting a lawsuit for dereliction of duties compared to a town road are definitely much lower.
Under the RSA, it creates no duty or obligation on the town whatsoever.
Whatsoever, so...
So the town doesn't have to do any maintenance on the pri, on the emergency lanes if they didn't want to.
Okay.
That's not been our practice. You know, because then it, then it makes the emergency lane designation moot.
Okay.
If you don't use it, then why designate it, right? But just to put some clarity into your definitions, um, by definition, all emergency lanes are already private roads, right? So these are not class five town roads. They're either class six roads or private roads that are not owned by the town. They can get an emergency lane designation, but they're still a private road. They still, it's still property that doesn't belong to the town. So, so while all emergency lanes, right, are private roads, and not all private roads are emergency lanes.
Correct.
We have plenty of private roads in town that have no such designation.
I live on a private road that's not an EL, but again, I'm less than 500 feet off the EL, so for me, it wasn't a problem getting a loan and getting a homeowner's insurance. Uh, so my recommendation is the board would be, I think, you know, the emergency lane, doing the valuation is a great first step to find out what is, you know, what's the state of the roads, these EL roads. Assess the needed improvements in cost and prioritize them and, uh, and then take it to the town for, for a vote. Uh, I would also recommend that the town do not remove EL designation from any existing roads, or you will definitely get lawsuits.
Possibility.
I can, again, can assure you that, but I would bet my house on that. And I think that creating requirements for the, what an emergency lane road is minimum requirements is great for new roads. But again, not for existing roads. And if you want to go connect those thoughts, in other words, if we, if the town comes up with a designation of this is what an emergency, minimum requirements for an EL road, then how do we get existing, for any future ones, they have to meet that assessed requirement? The ones that already exist, how do we get them over time up to that standard?
Right. I don't think, if that was, if that requirement was imposed to, to comply with a new standard, nobody would expect it to happen overnight. You know?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, before you begin, how many folks are left that are interested in speaking? Okay, we'll take these last three after this person and then we're going to move on.
Mark with 8111. I moved here four years ago, and before I bought the property that I now live in, I asked everyone that I could talk to, "Who takes care of the roads?" Everyone told me, "The town takes care of the roads." And while I was looking at my property, I saw the town taking care of the road. So I believed it. I now live there. I can't, I can't disappear. If you decide to stop maintaining the roads, it's going to be a significant change. And for a lot of people, they may lose their home insurance. They may not be able to get loans. Now, there's been a lot of rhetoric about, "We need to get out from underneath this," or, "We need to protect our employees and our equipment." Well, I would ask you, how many town employees have died in the last 30 years maintaining these roads? How many pieces of equipment have been totaled in the past 30 years by maintaining these roads? How many vehicles or equipment have been severely damaged by maintaining these roads? You talk about liability, there hasn't been that much liability for the town. I would suggest that there could be a lot more liability if the town decides to stop doing what they've been doing for the past 30 years.
Hi, I'm Charles Horton, 36, Seaman Points Road. I, I can understand that there's an issue with these roads that has to be addressed, and I don't think it's, you know, it's already dragged on for some... and I don't think it's, you know, it's already dragged on for some time and we need to get an end to this process. But in the interim, it's unconscionable that they've stopped all the maintenance on these roads because when they do arrive at a solution, whatever they have to do is going to be two or three times worse. We need to have at least the same maintenance we've had for the last 50 years so people can get in and out to their homes and if we have a police or fire emergency or an emergency on the wake, that people can get in here. Thank you.
So, my name's Kevin Jordan.
I'm Kevin Jordan. I live at 17 Beachhead Road. And I have a, something from the, I'm going to read it from the manual, from the municipal law lecture in New Hampshire, and it says, "Class VI roads are all other existing public ways that are not otherwise classified." So all these roads you're talking about are considered public ways because they're not otherwise classified.
No, they're not. That's incorrect. They are not public, I mean...
I'm here to speak, I think. I don't mean to interrupt you, but I mean, this is, yeah, because we don't, we don't have that much time. So there's no, there's no mechanism, as Chris brought up earlier, to fix the roads and we don't, there's no association, there's just a bunch of people. So if you say, "Okay, you don't meet our standards, now you guys got to fix the road," how do we do that? We don't have any way to do that. We have dozens of people, you know, on the road, some people might say yes, some people might say no. There's no way we can coerce everybody to form, form an association. There's no way we can force them into saying, "Hey, this is what we're going to do, you need to give us money." We don't have any mechanism for that. And that's going to be a real nightmare. I think Tom brought it up and other people have brought it up. And also, this has been going this way for 50 years and so, you know, you know, and, you know, the roads have been, you know, and when I got here, I called up the town and I said, "Hey, listen, what's going on with this road? Do you guys plow, do you guys maintain it?" And they said, "Yeah, we plow to maintain it as an emergency way." Based on that, I bought the house. And this was like 20 years ago and many other people have done that too. And as everybody note, points out, if, if, if the town didn't tell me that, I wouldn't have bought that house. But I did buy it because I said, "Oh, I can get insurance on it, fire departments can get down there, the town will be plowed to maintain the road." So like the gentleman said, who's new here, said, "You'd be pulling the rug underneath and well, what about us? We've been paying all this money all these years and you're pulling the rug out, out from underneath us." So I'm hoping that you can figure out a way to, to keep doing what you've been doing for all these years. And our other speaker also said that, that mentioned that the, that the service have degraded over the last three years. Well, I'm sure everybody remembers John Fernal. John Fernal was an employee, employee, I don't remember what he got, but maybe, let's just say he got $80,000 a year. Well, that $80,000 doesn't really amount to much taxes, but he kept all of our roads impeccable. He used to come down about 12 times a year. Now we're lucky if we see somebody three or four times a year, so where's all that money going? So I would say that we, we could use another road agent, you know what I mean? Because a road agent's job is to listen to the people and to help work with the people on a street-by-street basis. Without a road agent, there's nobody here to represent us. All we have is people saying, "We need to cut money, we need to cut money, we need to cut money." And they say, "Right, let's just cut that." And so I don't think that...
What are you talking about? We have a road agent right there who just started with this one.
Also, you have a, is he on the road agent, road agent?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
He was introduced earlier.
Oh, I didn't know he was introduced as a road agent. I apologize. I'm sorry about that. I thought he was unemployed.
He's actually a public works director now, which combines the duties of the former road agent plus supervision of the other facilities like the transfer station, recycle center and so forth.
Okay. Okay. I apologize.
He's right here.
Clear, a lot of what you said before, Johnny Fernal did on his own time.
Yes, he did.
It was not part of his salary paid, he did it on his own time for, because he just felt like that he liked doing it.
Okay.
So clarify on the money spent.
Yeah, and the, and the...
It was done on different standards.
And just to clarify that, the board doesn't have that expectation of Sean.
No.
Okay. Okay, fair enough, okay. So I didn't know all that, that stuff, I didn't know, but I will say that, I will still say that, that we had much better service and that we were, and that people are coming down 12 times a year and now we seldom see them and the roads, as other people have noticed and everybody's noticed, have degraded over the past three years. So, also, so I would say that, you know, it sounds like we have a standard in here, it's almost like we could set a standard right now. We, I don't see where we need to go behind closed doors. It's either going to be 14 or 16 feet. If we asked everybody in the room right now, we'd probably say, "Well, how do we disagree on 15?" We'd have one of the, one of the standards met. Also, for the, the other ones are graded. The grade should, should not be a requirement if it can't be changed because it's, you know, you, you'd be setting people up for an impossible task. Okay, you need to do this and you go, "Well, we can't change the grade, it's what it is." I mean, there's nothing we can do about that now. And if there's a height of 14 feet, why don't we just say, "Okay, why don't we just take a vote right now?" Everybody's going to say, "Yes, 14 feet." So I think we, we know what the standards are and I don't think it needs to be done behind closed doors. I think that, you know, that there was a good, a good job done with that, with, with Chris. And also, to me, all these standards that you set, as was pointed out early, I'm just going to repeat that, that those should be for new roads, not roads that have been around here for 50 years. Because for 50 years, people have been doing this. And like everybody says, these, these subdivisions were, 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 many of them were formed like 40, 50 or 60 years ago and they, they behave just like town roads. And there's no, and we don't even know what the, what the ownership of them and some of it, all of the ownership of a lot of these roads could be disputed and they could go to court between the people and the town, everybody. So I think that, you know, we just need to accept that, that, that they have been town roads and, and take care, taking care of its town roads for like the last, last, last 50 years. And that's all I had to cover.
Okay. Thank you.
Good job.
All right. This will be our, our last speaker for the night because we do need to wrap things up.
Yes. Thank you very much. I appreciate the ability to speak to the board and to the town administrator as well as the road agent slash head DPW.
Can you introduce yourself?
My name is Bill Shalali, 33, North River Lake Road. And I believe that North River Lake Road was one of the first roads that you had a chance to look at. And I was one of the residents that came and walked the road with you. So I'm always speaking for myself, but I would imagine that since you did such an extensive job of looking at the roads, and I imagine, when I think of concerned citizens like myself and two or three other people who walked the road with you, you had people who were property owners or homeowners listening and discussing and having input and hearing your advice with regards to how the roads looked and where the pinch points were. I think the pinch points are probably an important piece and that's really the only piece that I want to ask a question of. Based upon my recollection of when we walked that road together that day, I believe there were a couple of spots that were a little bit narrow and I believe that one of the people that was walking with us, property owner, asked, "Well, if I were to give you that foot that's missing..." But I'm not speaking for that person, that he or her, he or she, I will speak for myself and I'll speak for anybody else who asked that question of you. If you want a foot of my property to allow for the required width, you can have it, you can have it for nothing. You don't have to reduce my property value by that one foot or that two feet. If you want me to allow the fence, I'll allow the fence. If that's what it takes to get rid of that particular aspect, that particular facet, which I think is maybe the easiest thing to remove from, "Oh, you didn't make it, you're off by three inches." Is that something that can be taken into account with the data and the individuals that maybe also in your other walks on other roads said to you, "Hey, you want a foot of my property?" Is that something that can be looked at and a part two of the study that would incorporate that as a possibility to help make the improvements so that this is not such a contentious issue and that we can be working together? And I'm, I'm saying this for myself. I'll work with you, you want a piece of my land, it's yours. For the, for the better good. Thank you.
That, looks like that's it for public speakers. So, so really, the next question before us now is how to proceed. So I've already suggested we have a workshop open to the public like we did before so we can go through these and hammer them out. Because we do have to come to a conclusion at some point. I would like us to, if we're going to do the workshop, we come to a resolution. We owe it.
So what does a workshop look like?
Just like we did in December, except we're going to go through the, through the table, through all the roads, one by one, and evaluate their conditions, legal and physical conditions, and come to a decision on them.
How are we going to come to the decision? Are we going to look at each road and say yay or nay? Is that what the purpose of the workshop is?
We're going to have to discuss it.
I mean, I think some of the roads, like I said, they're describing it now where it sounds like they're pretty close to being ready. I mean, what I see in the writing, I mean, a lot of the different...
Some of them are.
Yeah, saying acceptable, you know, so I mean, that's, at least get them ones out of the way. We know that, and then this, get with everybody else and say, "Okay, what can we do to make, you know, lane A this and lane B that," you know? I mean, that's the goal though, is to get them all, you know, it's either all or not, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. There's no one-size-fits-all solution because not all roads are in the same condition or same situation legally. So we've got to come up with a, with an answer for each one individually. Like I said, some may be ready to be accepted as town roads, you know, and if they go through that process and bring it to town meeting, then, then that's resolved. They're, they wouldn't be an emergency lane anymore, they'd be a town road. Other roads don't qualify in any way, shape or form and we, we have to weigh all those.
I would be surprised if any today meet a standard that you would adopt for a Class V road. You don't have such a standard, but I think when you adopt one...
Right. But some are closer than others.
Very, very few that would today meet that standard, not knowing what the standard would be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
But some are closer than others.
Mm-hmm. But I, you wouldn't recommend acceptance of any existing as a Class V road right now, would you?
No, not at this point, no.
No?
So, I mean, back to Ben's point about, you know, if, if you don't have a framework for making a decision, then how do you make a decision? Right? You know, if we're going to go, aside from what you just said, which I understand, if you're going to go through a list and decide, "Yes, we're going to keep maintaining this one because it meets emergency lane with no risk to town employees, no, we're not going to do this one, yes, we think this one applies to town," then how, how are you making that decision other than a subjective evaluation of each road?
Well, for one, we have to look at the, the language of the RSA, right? And for the, the other piece of it, I think would be the current town policy.
Well, the current town policy is to maintain the roads as emergency lanes. That's the current town policy.
There's more than that, there's much more than that.
This topic, that's what it is.
The current emergency lane policy requires the landowners to take care of their roads in accordance with the RSA.
It's not stated in the policy anywhere.
No. It states right in there that emergency lanes expenditure, the town is up to the town to spend the money on it. It's up to the town to do it.
But not all means. Because if that's what it says, then it's in violation of the RSA. Because it's expressly stated that it's not intended to be a path for a private road to get equivalent maintenance as an accepted town road. It's not meant to bypass that. The RSA is only intended to give the town permission to act in an emergency. If it, if the road needs to be cleared, right, for, for public safety access, if a tree falls down, a culvert's washed out...
No, 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 no. No, no, no. It's saying that it can maintain it so that...
Can, not must.
It's not in an emergency, it's to afford the town passage in case of emergencies or in case of emergencies.
Right. But it doesn't require the town to assume all the burden of maintenance on a private road.
The town is doing minimal. Anyway, we can argue this until 1:00 AM. My concern is, yes, okay, we need a workshop. I just want to know how that workshop isn't going to turn into another meeting like tonight. That's all. That's all I want to know. What's the framework?
Well, we can't exclude the public. We've been doing...
Oh, that's funny, that's what I was suggesting.
No, 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 but I'm saying, we've done everything in the public eye to this point.
No, no, and that's good, but how are we going to frame our discussion?
Well, you just asked, "How do we make it not like tonight?" There are going to be mixed emotions on both sides of the coin.
I, I meant us. I meant us. I wasn't talking about that. And what I meant was, this discussion right now is going round and round in circles. And so how do we actually, in a workshop, move the discussion forward? That's all. I, I just, I'm very frustrated with this conversation.
So what do you propose? Do you have a possible solution?
I don't know. I mean, and maybe we start with Ben's suggestion that we look at what the draft standard was and look at how many of the, where each road falls and that, but it's not a decision of, "No, it doesn't meet what is in that draft." Because I think the intention was to, Chris came up with that draft, we wanted to go look at the conditions of the roads and then determine if that was a realistic standard or not. That was the process and the, you know, the thought process behind that. So, I mean, I, I don't know what you guys think, but...
I want to have a standard set so that we can go in front of the town and vote these all-town roads and get them out of the emergency lane status.
So that's a good point. What, you know what the good point is, is we don't have what an end goal is here. We're differing, we have different opinions on what the end goal is here.
Right. That's what my end goal would be. So that this discussion comes down, the insurance, what we've talked about for their insurance is on their house, the maintaining the values of the properties that are on the road, it's, and then to keep this discussion from having up and having, you know, the residents all over the town, the three different lakes we were talking about, have to come and, and listen to this discussion, whether we decide to save a couple bucks by killing off a couple roads and not maintaining them. Why don't we spend the money like we do on others to get them up to a standard where we can maintain them and keep them for the good tax money that everybody's paying?
We, we being who?
We them, I mean, again, that's part of our discussion we're going to have.
That's a critical factor. Your, your answer is a critical factor.
But again, if we're talking...
We think if it's the town, that's illegal. We cannot spend the money on private property to get them up to standard where they could be accepted as town roads. That's a landowner...
So do we, do we accept them first and then do it?
You want to put that expense on the town.
Well, again, you're not putting it on the, I, I don't like it when you say putting it on the town. I'll use the reason why I don't like putting it on the town is, these people are the town also and their, and their tax money is going to fund everything else in the town, just like everybody else's.
Right.
We're excluding them.
These people, I cannot hear him completely.
We're excluding them by saying, "Okay, your tax money is good to be spent everywhere else in town, but to spend it on your area."
Correct.
That's how I see this, this subject coming up.
That's the law. You cannot spend tax dollars on private property. You cannot.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I think, Mr. Chair, I think this is getting, this has gotten out of hand. And I, I think the question is, what do we do in a workshop? And that, I don't believe we're in a position to answer that right now. I'd like to recommend that we end the meeting and that Chris work with members of the board to come up with a structure for a workshop. We're going nowhere now.
I'd like some input from Sean as well, when we develop these...
Fine. But it, for the standards, yes.
Yes.
But I'm just talking about the workshop.
Yeah.
What does the workshop look like? How do we, how do we move this forward? Because this is...
I'm okay with that. I mean, I, I don't think we have to have the, the rules carved in stone tonight. We can absolutely look at a format like you're suggesting and try to nail down some criteria. I'm okay with that. I just want us to agree to have a workshop so we can take the next... I just want us to agree to have a workshop so we can take the next steps.
I want us to agree to have a productive workshop.
Well, that's the...
No, it's not.
That's the, that's the expectation.
Well, we need to know how we're gonna do that.
I personally would like to see a resolution come out of this workshop where everyone is, you know, comes together with an agreement. You know, one of the residents came up and said, you know, "We need to make this rock solid so the future boards don't come back and say, 'We're gonna undo it.'" We owe it to them, we owe it to the rest of the town to come up with a resolution. It's time to come up with one. No more kicking this can down the road. So I want, this next, this workshop, at the very end, we all walk out of there with some kind of resolution.
I'm agree, absolutely.
Whatever that may be.
Yeah, we have to, we have to start meeting like this.
Yes.
Do you have anything else to say?
This, this has been, this is the same as it was last meeting. This has been time-consuming.
You have not come up with anything different than there was in the last meeting.
Got it.
Every meeting has been the same thing. People get up and ditched. You guys talk about what you can do, what you can't do.
It is a slow process.
It's a complex problem and it's a slow process.
I'm just agreeing with you. I'm just saying, we need to stop bickering and come up with a decision. If you want each neighborhood, each street to get a representative to meet with you in a time, then say it. Don't just, "Can we do that?" or whatever. Say it, you're the board, tell them you need a representative from each street to sit in the board to make a...
Let's, I have invited, right, I have extended an open invitation at every meeting to contact us, get in touch with, with your ideas, your thoughts. Come forward to, come forward to the meetings with representatives. Whatever format you want to engage, the invitation is open.
What he's, what he's proposing, I think, is, and there's, there's gotta be some onus on the people who live on the roads, right? There's gotta be. And there's, there are no associations, there are some associations that are social groups, right? There's no teeth or anything, but why don't the people who live on the roads appoint a representative, right? Whether they have an association or not, appoint a representative. And that person comes and represents that group of people on, with communication with the board.
At the workshop.
And then, at that point, you can look at all your discrepancies you found on the roads and then come up with a solution for your standard. You gotta come up with an idea before you can solve it.
Chris was asked a long time ago to have a rep from each road to come and talk to you and you said, "No."
Was Chris...
I don't...
Was Chris have no...
Yeah. A long time ago, we asked for, if we could have a rep from each road to come and talk and on each individual road, does he have problems or...
So, how would you want to address if a representative from a road doesn't show up?
Basically, the road people would have to elect a representative.
Okay. No, I'm just trying to get a feedback from you, that's all.
If I'm, if I'm the representative of our dairy lane, if I don't show up, then we give up our right to discuss the ruling for that.
Fair enough, okay.
It's just like if one of you guys don't show up, it doesn't get your vote.
Yeah, you're right.
I guess one of the other things we should talk about in this meeting is, are you guys committed for all 28 roads? Or you're gonna start picking and plucking?
I've always held that there's, there is not a single solution that works for all the roads.
No, we didn't say a single solution, but is the goal going to be all the roads?
To resolve all of them, have a solution, yeah, that's the hope.
Okay.
Because if we leave, if we come to a resolution on some and leave some just kinda floating out there, then we are just kicking the can down the road for the next board, right?
And to make your problem even smaller, as if your resolution, I mean, not your resolutions, but your, your write-ups you have on the different roads, if there are some roads that you say are almost ready to go, then let the, let that road know, "Okay, guys, you want this road to be town, this is the problem, you gotta take care of it." They take care of that problem, then you vote it into a town. That's one less road you gotta worry about.
But no, we haven't accepted the fact that the people are gonna take care of the road yet.
No, I know, but someone, someone has to, everyone's gotta work together on it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is it possible for, some of the roads are owned by one person, some of the roads are owned by multiple people, is it possible for people who own a whole road or portions of the road have access to the evaluation data?
It's on the website.
It's on the website.
It's on the highway department on the website.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right, that's all the time we have for tonight, so we are gonna close this meeting. Unless anyone else has any comments or questions, I will take a motion.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out.
Yes.
Despite, you know, I really wanna ensure everybody, we are here to ensure the betterment of town.
I've seen a definite curve.
Okay. All right, we are committed.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? All right.
Welcome to non-hand.
Welcome to town, buddy.
Now you get it.
I don't think we need a non-hand. I don't know, yeah.
I know, I know, I understand. I understand.
I'd advise you to just stop doing it.
No, no, he didn't. He said, he said...
He said, "Get out of here."
Well, he said, he said...
And they're saying, "Spend the money fixing it." Yeah, and spend the money and fix it.
He said, "Give us that."
And then, so, let me ask you...
It's gonna be dark.
Hi. We're waiting here on, um... What's it? Yes. Uh... Your roads are sitting like a ceiling, that quickly it falls under the private road. And you know who we, yeah, so, yeah, we're in a ceiling.